Shop for October seventeenth, 2020. And for the.
The record is that Mayor. Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Froligent. Councilmember McKlaiman.
Here.
Councilmember Swatlin. And Councilmember Watson.
Here. Should. Should. Count. Full. Second. Aye.
Now, straight into a presentation from. Or. Circle. Shoot. So. House. House. Truck. So. Reason I wanted to. Show you like a. Sure. Find this property very. The negative. I don't want to go. Chops. Box. Um. Standing. Uh. Since I've been. Lots of.
Can't hear the meeting. Well, that's nice, but I can't very well do anything because I can't hear what you're saying. There's no microphone. Well, that's good, but I can't hear nothing in no way. Doesn't matter. I can't talk because I don't know what I'm talking about.
Just on her end, or is it just?
Maybe you don't have electricity.
Could be.
Is it working now?
Campfire.
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
I mean, I heard you.
Okay, thank you. And by some technical difficulties.
Russ?
Are we ready to proceed then? We think? Okay.
All right.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Sorry for that. Anybody didn't hear? Um. Nothing was really missed. We're just talking about the history and. issues of the current state. Um, understand the landscape. Th- this is where we're starting to really get into the meat of the matter. Um. Bit to Holly and with the. precedent and growth that's going on. There's a ton of demand. Local sports. Or. Because I run a local soccer club, w- we're. Trying to be creative every day, trying to find. You and. Creative solutions to try and get all the kids to play. It. To Holly coming in and. Just gonna use my daughter as an example. She goes to Bonnie Lake High School right now. They're, they have, she has two classes in the hallway. So. I. If, if there's, for our high schools that are. Size right now, we don't. Classroom space, imagine trickle out effect that they want to play sports and stuff like. As the Holly continues to build. Feel really passionate about the need to have. More sports fields, more places to play. So, if we can work together to find a solution on that, just try and find a way. These kids, busy and active, for all the right reasons. For health. Learning camaraderie, for leadership. So, this is just a stat. Going, and are we not going to stop that? So, how do we? Have there to find reasons? Why I'm here? Slide. All right, what we have in mind, um. Like I said before, I'm not going to go through every line of this, and I, I just want to. Talk to you guys about what our goal is. Questions and. Shots at me. So, what we would like to do is build. A lot of, not running out of. Takes into consideration of all. Lots of reasons for that. Um, I'm a firm believer that. Many hands make light work, more people we have involved. easier to be to get things done. Also, firm believer that. Need to have people chip in so they take ownership. We're renting field space from. School district. They've done a. City where they're allocating a certain. Where they're all. They know if we make a mistake, you know, that that field there. So. I'm hoping that with the h- help of the council and the people in the community. One large, um, sport. Give you guys, city council and schools, one throat to choke. One, one person to hold accountable. One person that can answer questions about. No other reason than to help streamline, because I think we're in the massive need right? Dragged down by seventeen different sports programs. That is our goal, is to unite that. We've. Um, we've, we've met with. Most of the sports. Haven't, we will, and we've had. Quite a few of them join us so far. And. Just going to be transparent with you guys. If. Just talking about joining for a reason. Aren't going to do that. When they come see the viewpoint, see the potential and they know. Of the, the sports program out there. They, they wouldn't have joined before when others, you know, Scott being charming, they're now wanting to join because there is a. And they can see it, they go, oh, my goodness, we could put batting cages there. There. There could be. Start talking about these things, and that gets people invested. People committed, people wanting to help us. That's our goal, is to have everybody take a part and be stewed in that. If we. Me and you guys build this thing. Positions of, everybody has to do something. Everybody has to build. I want to have. So, that's, that's the, that's the. That's the, the nine-minute pitch of what we'd like to do there. Clicking on this. The, the most recent one to, to talk about joining us is, um, Bonnie Lake Robotics. All right, so this is a. High-power, artist rendition of what it would look like in the future. Time machine. So, this is the property. Goal would be to leave the, the big trees that are here in the front, ha- have a horseshoe-type entrance and exit. While leaving all these existing buildings and trying to repurpose them. These are those really dilapidated buildings that we talked about. This road goes through the middle of that haunted house right here. These buildings over here, we'd like to reuse, repurpose. Get them back, back online. There is a. Significant grade difference between. This street here and the back over here, where we're trying. Trying to figure out how we would deal with that grade, because that's millions of yards cubic feet.
Big toys.
He can hear you, by the way. Oh, and, okay.
Not Friday the thirteenth, so.
Yeah, no, we're good.
All right, so. See here is what we propose. This could change. These aren't, you know, these aren't sports-specific type. They're just ideas. If we got. You know. Rugby or if we got football, then, you know, we would probably change our take. Try and get people. The space most efficiently with people that want to. We can hold all of our questions to the end? Are you guys?
We've cured it with you, so I know what, I know what you're talking about, so.
You're doing a great job explaining it.
Have, have we all been out there, the whole council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, everybody has been out there except for Justin. He's been offered but has declined. I do have a question. How, what, uh, what sports have joined since you started kind of moving towards this whole thing?
Because we're not making a big deal about signing contracts. Maybe we should do better about that. But they're verbally committed. We have a baseball club committed, we have a rugby club committed. We have pickleball committed, and we have soccer committed, flag football committed, and probably tomorrow clothes on. So, but there's plenty more, and the ones that anybody's listening that, you know, get mad and send me hot texts right now. We just haven't got to everybody yet. Plan. See lacrosse, want to see football, see. My goal personally would be to, as many people as we can get. What I would. I hung up on it being just sports. Space that we can do things, other things, and let's talk about.
Is that enough room for parking? I mean, I see when you're down at Kelly Farms and that place is, like, it used to have the fair down there. Lots of cars down there. I know.
You're reading right by.
I know you talked about before that we have a lot of people that drop their kids off and come back later.
Yeah.
It just seems like mouthful tight.
There, and probably because this is opaque, this color.
Uh-huh.
You know, maybe I could have done better for some dimensions on there. There, there is a lot of space. We, we didn't line it, you know, over here, all this space here. We didn't line it for parking, but this, this is a lot of space there. That. Stalls we came up with, but we, we're using Kelly Farms, and that, that was a game days too. You know, Kelly Farm, what you're seeing when there's all those cars. But that's, that's on a game day.
Jason, what kind of park regu- requirements do you require with something like this?
Friend of the city, and it was public facilities zone. I want to say. It's, there's a, there is a ratio in the municipal code of a, a certain spaces per. Thousand square feet of developed sports, uh, recreational areas. So, we would look at the square footage of the fields. The recreational building divided by a thousand, and there's a specific. Number of parking stalls that come out based on that ratio. I can't remember it off the top of my head. It's. Somewhere between three and eight is what my memory is telling me, but I could be. Way off, but there is something in the code for recreational requirement for parking facilities.
I'm just concerned about any problems in the neighborhood, and we talked before about not causing congestion out there too. So, when you come back next time.
Absolutely.
Good for that. Be wonderful. Thank you.
We have, you know, I'll, I'll try and cover that in some of the next steps. If I don't cover that before I leave up here, hit me again. About the next step. This, these are always cool because they show, you know, what we could, what we could potentially do with the space. But this is. You know, until we get engineering and the design back, until we get all the. Players, strategic partners, but this is, this is a. This is what. Good. So, how we can do that?
Oh, Scott, I had a question. Um, just in the previous picture with the larger fields, um, and I'm assuming those are all turf, because that's what you're saying is, is the need right now. Um, in regards to the larger fields, are those fields that can then be separated into different quadrants where multiple? Teams are playing, or is it just two teams, one game per field?
For practices, we traditionally will use one field.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Uh, games, depending on. Shop promises modified.
Mm-hmm.
We're designing that on purpose because that's further away. Further away from that. I don't know how to go back. Bitch down your. There you go.
There you go.
Mm-hmm.
So, these are modified fields. So, these are for your younger kids, and then for, when we're doing practices for. Older kids, we go this way with the fields. We break the fields into four. Then, same thing for games, you know, we could put. You know, we could split this in half, little, little kids, or we could split this into thirds for, for. Depending on our needs.
Yeah.
We do that.
Okay.
Right, so how we do this, you know, the, the. Eight coming with the plan. Take a step towards the right direction, okay? One is to, to build. Unstop shopping. To build facility, sports facility that could, that was multi-sport. Location for. Two, how are we going to do the money? Um, part of that gets back to the design engineering, see what bark housing comes back, see how much we can actually do. Right now, we're guessing that's what we can do, till they come back. Parking, you know, those are the guys that know those things. That, that's what we'll get, you know, in a sense, construction company. Organizing, right now, what are we doing? Organizing. We're getting people together. We're. Coalition of people. Many people that'll listen to. Also, you know, just playing a forward. Going to be looking for grants. Tournaments. That's another great resource for. Right now, we don't currently have fields that you need when you want to do a tournament. We can. Business in. Leaving. Stay and play. We could have a tournament where. I'm here for a destination to play. This could be, I guess. Build and, um, build and create accountability, you know, I've, I've. Logistics and life and. Really like to have a, a tight plan. Specific plan. I want to have a. Smart plan. I want to have a measurable plan, and I want it to hold me accountable. Say, you know, say we're going to do something I want. Say we're going to have it done in two years and do that. Those are, those are the things I want to bring after we get feedback. Continue to. Strategic partners, these are just the basic ones. City of Bonnie Lake, County, Muckleshoot, constituents in our clubs, rack, clubs, and the neighbors. Um. This is just more, you know. Put this slide in here because. Show everybody that, that we understand the. The territory. Understand that some monuments there. We understand that there's some Indian War stuff there. Understand that. Just turn our, you know. Stand, what does that mean? Something. Potentially might pay homage to that. Is there, is there any way to partner with the tribe, to do something collectively as a group? Is there anything we can do together to say, okay? We're not, you know, we're not ignoring this, and I don't know specific. Vicinity. We'd like to just. All right. Eyes wide open about that. Talk about that. Just want to talk about, there's other groups that aren't. There's all these raids, trails programs, and there's these other things that. Take it all in and come up with, you know, measure three times and cut. Cut, help everybody? Midtown. Now you're talking. The jewel of the city, right?
It is.
It is the, it's the center of our community. It's the hub. Some could call it the heartbeat, right? It's, it's where we, it's where we should be building this. Yeah, it's.
Okay, cool. I'm in. Yeah, I got it. And, and.
All, all kidding aside, you know, it, it would be lovely to, to think that we could do something in, in Midtown together. It'd be awesome. My, my goal, my suggestion is. We're going to need both. Need both, because we need that many. We're, we're both. Serving the kids that we have. Don't start soon. It's going to get further. It'd be nice to be, whichever one can go first, we should be trying to do that. I think we're going to need. I brought this up because I wanted to. Ignore what's going on. Love to say if we can do this, maybe we can help with. We can.
Knows.
We could take the bulldozers from one site to the next.
There you go. Perfect.
Maybe if you're, um, successful, then you're trust. That's it. Told you it'd be less than nine minutes. So, if we can. Some feedback, this can. We need. Financial plan. We know we need design engineering. Site. What other things can you guys think of? Asking that we're not taking.
We, and before we move to that step, we need the access and use agreement that Doug has. So, we've sent you an access and use agreement that we're still waiting on feedback from you all on.
I'll speak to everyone. Just waiting on. And.
Okay.
I don't know why that.
Yeah, but just certainly before we cut bark housing loose and start going out there with weed whackers and everything, we need that access and use agreement. Yeah.
Hey, Chris, did you hear that we're going out there with? I heard you took a lot more people out there than you.
That's all good.
Do not. We, we understand. We're not going to take any undue liability.
Yeah, Mr. Noel. No, I really appreciate all the work that your group is doing on this, you know, project, and that you're looking forward in Bonnie Lake and the needs of the future youth and athletic people that would want to use these sites. You know, that's really great. So, I'm really, really happy to see you guys involved with this, you know, and other council members and everybody that put the packages together and all the youth group looking, looking to make it happen. So, I'm really excited to see if we can work something out and, uh, you know, look forward to your participation in the future.
Yeah, take the village.
Yeah, indeed. Yeah, exactly right. Yeah, because.
Those we want to help. Should believe it better than.
Yep, there's a lot of interest groups involved, so, you know, and you're doing a great job in keeping them involved, and, you know, whether it's just the historical or the neighborhoods or whatever it is, you know, there's all those, uh, traps and little pitfalls you're going to go through and, uh, keep up with, so, you know.
I'm sure we're going to make somebody unhappy. Just let me know. Well.
Nah, it's all good.
Go be by, nerd, stop by Dallas. Somebody's going to get mad.
Yeah, that's okay. That's fine. It's exciting. You guys want to take, you know, take the initiative to kind of get it rolling, because when the city tries to do something, you know, how long have we sat on WSU? Um, you can see how well the city does it doing things. We need the private individuals with that partnership to get it done, right?
I appreciate your guys'. Your roles, your jobs. See need. Just to.
Yeah, just to be clear, you were involved with the development of the field at Kelly Farm? He's nodding his head yes. So, and then, how long did it take to develop a, a field there?
We had Kelly Farm done it.
Okay. And how many athletes does that serve?
Because it's all grass and because it rains a lot here. So, it's year round. So, that's kind of a. But right now, we run all of our. The, the entry level soccer gets ran through. So, when you guys drive by there on a Saturday and see all those people out there, that's entry level. It's just a 30% of the club. So, that is the entry, that's the beginning of, that's the. It's the, it starts. So, um. Seven hundred. Plus with your futures. So, we have our recreational and we have our futures, the little feeder tops, the little two to five year old. That's how it started with Corliss. Just how that's been in the very.
Hey, thank you.
Play answer. Councilmember Baldwin.
Um, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for that presentation. And also, I know that, uh, your chief motivation is really and truly to serve the kids in Bonnie Lake, and so I do appreciate, um, just the vision that you're having right now to be able to, uh, provide more for them. I know that that's definitely a hindrance in our community right now. Um, and so, thank you. I just want to say thank you. Yeah.
Councilmember Watson.
Thank you. And what you talked about, people coming to the sports events and then going shopping after breakfast last Saturday was a good example of that when I drove by quite often Kelly Farms, it probably a couple hundred cars down there or something. And then they're dropping kids off and driving back out and going someplace. That helps our city tremendously.
We get thank you notes from Target all the time.
Uh, a few years ago, I talked to developer about putting a hotel up here. His two biggest problems were there were no weekend sports going on to get people to stay overnight, stay, spend the weekend, and there are no large businesses being industrial business in Bonnie Lake for them, for people to fly in, just to do their job and then go, go out. Right now, if this goes forth with what you're doing and what's going forward in East Town, might put those together, we might get a hotel in Bonnie Lake or the area, which we need desperately. So, I can see how it's going to help not only the kids, but have our businesses grow with this too, which is important, and get more people to come to Bonnie Lake later too. So, I appreciate all you're doing forward. So, multi-phase project for us in so many ways.
Yeah, there's definitely, you know, we, we, we all know it's a bedroom community. You know, people come here to sleep, you know, they also raise their kids here. Stay and plays are a big, big thing. Stay and play tournament could generate the revenue, they could take care of building the next set of fields. Just got to get, I'm that pump of getting, getting started. Continue on. And, and a hotel would be great. Business and, and I go to. This project, how does it make its own revenue? Has to make its own. Talk about getting. Constituent. Right there. I want to make it more affordable. Think. So many. So many, I'm tied to the soccer side. They're represented by our club and. Some of the best soccer. Gene are coming up. And I want to help stay on. Miles, miles away. What a good thing going with soccer and we want.
Next, next time you come, it'd be nice to hear, you're talking about so many different clubs, what would that encompass quantity wise, students possibly? Nice to hear that because I know you guys stand, they're going to Sumner, they're going Ena McLauren Buckley and stuff, but is that 4,000, 5,000 over, over years period? Nice to know those numbers.
Yeah, we, we estimate that we're serving 5,000.
Ah, okay.
Just with MRs. Estimates when we're talking about. Drop a pin in Bonnie Lake. Yeah. Deep obstacle with the lake. No, it's, maybe you guys have heard of it? There's a big lake in the middle of it. So, uh. I don't want to, I'm not here to bring problems. I'm here to bring solutions. I'm not, I'm not here to. That's serious about Bill. As soon as possible, after we get. Anything else, guys?
Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we'll move on to council open discussion. Councilmember McLeibens.
So, I've been, I went out to the property and looked around. I've also spent, uh, uh, approximately 20 years coaching soccer. I was a C license coach. And, uh, invested a lot of time and money in it, and most of the kids I know that took it seriously did better than most, just in the sense that, that when a 17-year-old gets home from competitive sports, they usually go to sleep, right, instead of to their PlayStation? So, that's a win. Uh, you know, just looking at all this stuff, I don't see how we can lose. Um, I think if we gave, um, MRAC $5 million and asked them to build something, I think we'd get a lot more than one turf field, right? Which is what we got at the park down there. Um, I, I would also like to see how we could get out of their way. My kids grew up on gravel parking lots and grass fields, and, uh, they played, um, in, uh, big tournaments a couple of times on turf fields, a couple of times in a stadium. But, um, you know, the grass fields are great for kids. They're great for everybody, the families that come. You know, I don't see how we can lose, and I would endorse us trying to move as expeditiously as we could on this.
Thank you. Any other open discussion? Yep. Councilmember Baldwin.
Hey there. Um, last week, um, the mayor had given a warning to a constituent that was speaking, um, about sticking to city business. Um, and in so many words to, um, exercise caution in what the constituent was going to say about maybe specific individuals. And, um, I'm certainly not on the side of, uh, hurting people's feelings, being rude, being mean, whatever that looks like. However, I think as a council, as a governing body, we need to definitely, um, err on the side of caution in how we create barriers, uh, towards people being able to speak to us. Um, I already think it's hard for, um, people to come to their governing bodies and address them and talk with them. And again, I, I'm not excited when somebody comes up and is saying something about me, for example, and that has happened. Or if they're saying something to someone else that I feel like is not necessarily true or whatever it may be. However, I, I just don't know that the step to take is to then create more barriers for people to be able to speak to us. I think, um, we give people five minutes of time. And that's not very much time. It may feel like a lot of time if someone is maybe saying things that, um, are harsh, but that's not, it's not their, it's not the constituent's responsibility to, um, be careful what they say to their government. That is a dangerous area to tread. And so, last week, what happened, um, bothered me. It definitely bothered me, not because, um, I was offended, uh, by, by whatever was being said, but it was just, it felt like a deliberate, um, silencing or restriction on a resident that was trying to address the council. And so, um, I know in looking at things, um, it sounds like we have some sort of Bonnie Lake municipal code, um, something saying that, um, constituents have to stick to, um, city business. Uh, I, I don't know that I agree with that. I think if, if residents want to come and talk to their city government, um, they have, again, they have five minutes. They can tell us the things that are burdening their heart or the things that are bothering them about the country, about the city, about the county, whatever it is, the state. Uh, and they should be able to air those grievances to us. I, I just don't understand. I, I feel like we need to make sure that that's not something we put in place as a restriction. I, I did not like that. What are your thoughts?
Councilmember McLeibens.
Yeah, there are three things that are really scary. One is when your government says, I'm going to turn off your mic. I want your guns and where are your children? The microphone is definitely as serious as taking, uh, your second amendment away or, or coming for your children. Though I feel the same way.
Anything else? I, I would agree with you. Councilmember Watson.
There are a few things, but I, I agree with you. I mean. I've taken abuse my whole life that doesn't really matter from as a retail store manager, and you take it and you live with it and go on. You know, you wash your shoulders. People has an opinion, everyone has an opinion, and they're right to their opinion. They want to come here and tell us what they think? That's fine. Stay within the regular, the requirements of our five minutes and what they're doing, and we see, feel safe with them around, then we're fine that way too. So, and just move on and listen to them. That's all, that's what we do. As councilmembers anyway, I've been there for 12 years. Seen lots of people that have, uh, way from here that have told them what they thought about me and the, and the city, what we're doing. And why don't you do something about this, Tom? And I agree, whatever. So, I look at it, so it's, I'm good with it. But. I also got a couple of things covering real quick here. Of course, I went to CFF this past month. Um, it was on October 5th. With a really good meeting, I couldn't escape the whole thing. They talked about, um, mental health issues the schools are having. They've got a lot of stuff. I got all kinds of brochures that are about brain suicide, the mass suicides they've had, tempest suicides in the school districts is going on. They've got resource center. They've got some training coming up for it. And, um, part of the reason I left part of the meeting, had to go to another event, but I have two people in my family real close to the, have mental health issue had. They've since passed away because of that. She, three of them. My brother had it. My nephew had it, killed himself. My mom had it too. So, I know what it's like and what these kids, what they're going through these days and how things have been very traumatic. I think it's something that the city may want to look at too, how we can assist in some way, either workshops or something in the future. But it's really getting bad out there from what I've heard from the people and what they're doing, and so it's something we should consider. And I'm not sure what yet, and just want to bring it to you to think about. And they have a mental health summit coming up for, for the, for the schools or anyone else who wants to go to. If you're interested, let me know. Like I said, I've got a ton of information here. They also have the presentation after I left about the before and after school program for the kids, what's going on. And, uh, right at school, I guess it's going very well. That's going. So, that was a good coverage there. Because I left early myself, Captain Evans and the mayor went to the homecoming parade. Had a great turnout, people all over the streets, good seeing so many people and stuff. It's nice to get that, that connection out there with everybody. And so, hopefully in the future, we get some more council members out there just so they can see us and stuff. Because not, we used to have parades at Allen York Park for the council members, and we ride on a float down there and go down a couple of streets. So, it was really good for exposure that we're people and getting yourselves out there. So, what we can do to see in groups as a, a group of us together, I think is very beneficial. They can recognize us and talk to us and see us in the street. Also, last Saturday, I went to the Timber Ridge Animal Hospital grand opening. You know, there must have been 100 people there. I was there for over an hour, talking to people, um, meeting them, what's going on? They're so excited about the, the facility is wonderful. Uh, I put pictures on my Facebook page and stuff, but they've got a huge, um, area for all their surgery and stuff and like the pets at several rooms. I mean, it's just very, very nice. Many years ago, I went to their old facility. It was very small, hard to get in and out and stuff, as you know. So, it's nice to see the businesses are putting their money back into Bonnie Lake for future growth that way. Great location to use it for, uh, type of the business and stuff. So, I'm glad, hopefully we'll see more doing things like that. They've been here for a while and they're growing their business and doing more for the community. And I think that covers everything tonight and a half. Thank you.
Councilmember McLeibens.
Yeah, one more thing is I wanted to talk with the council is, uh, um, or share with them, because this is the time we get to, um, talk openly with, is the, uh, you know, is a realization of when we get taxed, we should very definitely pass that along to, um, the, the people that, um, that are within that taxing district, right? It's not, especially if it's, uh, is a very targeted area. I think it makes complete sense to do that. Doing anything else would be crazy. So, I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that's where I was at.
And we, to back him up, I think just, he went online, what we're doing is the Lake, Lake Ridge area, because we're going to charge, Lake and Hills, because our water goes out there and we sell and the higher price. Now, city of Auburn wants to charge us for selling our water to, to the residences up there, which is ridiculous. But if that's what they want to charge us for, then then we need to charge it back to them too. I agree with you totally. It's too bad. I feel bad for them, but there's no reason for us to eat that, that extra charge in that area.
Uh, if I might, thank you for bringing that up. On CFO Ryerson had emailed out the council earlier. Uh, it's roughly about $200,000 a year. Would only apply to those, uh, city of Auburn residents, residents. And so, we would identify a line item on the bill that would clearly identify it as a, you know, city of Auburn utility tax. And so, if those folks, you know, are understandably concerned about it, they could approach their council, council, uh, in the city of Auburn. But. And you'll send a letter out like, we, we see. Yeah, we, I, well, maybe Stephanie can speak to that, but I think we.
Yeah. The authorization for. And letting them know what's going. On their website. And.
Excellent. Perfect. Thank you. You have something? Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to add, um, because I wasn't quite finished. I, I was curious then, uh, what, what do we do? What would be the next step then for? That municipal code? I was told that it is a municipal code.
You're talking back to your first issue?
Yeah. The city business.
Free speech.
You talked about the cut with citizens comments.
So, there's nothing in.
Looking up code currently for those following along online.
And I, I think I, I also want to just add, um, just on the record, um, I, I thought what was said was highly offensive. So, so please know that. I, I did not think it was kind. But at the same time, it's, it's exactly what you're saying, right? Is that they get to say whatever they want to say and, you know, exactly. Yeah.
While, if I might, while they're looking stuff up there to kind of verify what our administrative procedures are on that, um, you know, because being around for a long time, there are people that, in groups that try to do that type of stuff, right? And so, the ones that want to like target individuals, I think is kind of a strange exception because they're here for city business, you know? And then there's that, it's that free speech versus the ability of the council to actually do the work of the people, right? So, it'll be, you know, it's kind of up to the chair really to kind of try to nuance that around a little bit, um, because you don't want a situation where you're going to have a bunch of people that are going to, you know, use the podium for a political attack on particular people and not monopolize the time, right? You know, they can do that, yeah, under free speech kind of thing, maybe, but, um, you know, you've got to have to, you know, what our purpose to me for a council is, you know, my expectation as a citizen is that the council can do their work, and there's a lot of other people here, staff, people here that, you know, do spend their time and, and really do get compensated for that in some way. So, whether it's, you know, you're lining up in a political situation where you're going to have a political person come up and make his point, five minutes, 10 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, you know, on and on and on, worst case, which almost never happens, is that the council conducting good business? is that the council conducting good business, right? So, you know, I think again, to me, it's kind of a chair thing. So hopefully, because I, like I said, I've been here for 20 some odd years and I've, first time I've ever seen somebody or heard somebody say a curse word, right? In open public. It's like, timeout, you know, there's other people listening to this, the public that's listening, it's children. So, you know, to be careful with our words. We might have something from shady.
So what it says is, "The public may address the mayor and council regarding any matter relating to city business or over which the city has authority." Is what it says. But there also is a section on conduct and decorum when addressing the council. And, you know, that goes into being courteous.
Yeah. But that doesn't, because a long time ago, I think it said something about, you know, personal attacks and stuff like that. So that's probably been dropped out of there. So it's more open today?
Councilmember McLeibens?
So I, I think we have to be careful here to not differentiate between the spoken word and the written word. I know there's a great deal of correspondence that goes on that's very hateful and hurtful as well. There's no end to that, it seems. You know, and I really appreciate Councilmember Watson's broad shoulders, because hateful and hurtful speak, speech, whether it's written or spoken is, 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 is we can do better, right? You can, if you have a need, you can do better. So I just challenge council to not listen to what's being said or how it's being said, but what is being said. And can we do better? Because it, it's going to happen in, in person or via email, it happens a lot too. So I get concerned that we're focused on just the verbal. Because there's, you know, for every, every verbal incident that I can think of, and there's been quite a few in the four years I've been on council, I can think of probably five or six times more written that I get. So I, I think it's just the price we pay. And I personally, if, if, if I think that the executive is trying to turn off somebody's mic, I'm going to make a motion to reverse that immediately, because I feel it's inappropriate. I think it's five minutes of somebody's hate speech is a cheap price to pay for our freedom.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Um, if I remember correctly, when I had first started, there was a, a letter that was read out loud. It, there was, there was a curse word in it.
Second, I missed it?
Yeah, oh, I did not. I did not. Which, again, people can address me in that way. I, I think you, you have to be careful though, because people can come and tell government officials they don't like them. They can. They should be able to. It's, it's not nice, it doesn't feel good, but it's, it, we're government. And I think you are treading on very thin ice when you try to tell somebody that they cannot come and tell their government they don't like them. And so I, I also think that we don't have enough people coming to even speak for that matter. So when people do want to speak, you know, it's not like we're spending a bunch of time having many individuals in lines coming to talk to us. I think on, on another side of things, I know that we had, when I was at the A W C conference, one of the things that they addressed was, there was a council member that was talking with a lawyer and the lawyer was making a presentation for us as government officials. And saying that, again, you have to be very careful in how you quiet a populace. And that you can't, she was complaining about constituents coming regularly each week, personally attacking her and saying things to her. She said that it was hate speech, she said that it was this, she said it was that, and the lawyer said it is not. Because we are government officials. And she is addressing and speaking to her government. And so I think that's where even as a city, we have to be careful. There, there are, I mean, that's what they said at the A W C. Again, I don't know if that is accurate, but, you know, he had been working in these several cases and was using case law to explain to us why we, we can't do that. So, just another thought.
Councilmember Watson?
It's just a quiet, glaring evidence that as a council person, you're always a council person. Not just here, not just in this building, but whether you're at home, walking the street, whatever, all times, depending on how you react, you're still a council person. And you have to answer for that when you do something that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah. Anything else? You good? All right, no other open discussion? All right. Uh, next we have a discussion item on the council retreat date. I'm sorry, the minutes, I'm sorry. We had, Councilmember Watson, did you review the minutes?
We had one correction. It's been taken care of.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Now we'll move on to the discussion item, the council retreat date. And did we have a couple of potential dates to throw out there? I know, I've been really busy, I'm sorry.
What was open?
In March 2nd. March 9th.
Hey Scott.
Hi.
Whatever. Are they so far away? I guess in, not in January or something?
Oh, January, we have New Year's, then we have, is it Martin? Martin Luther King. So it just seemed like a lot. And doing new council members, getting them all their trainings done and everything like that. So February, and February is a short month, so March seemed to be the good time in order to be able to get catering and stuff like that. Because we're thinking of doing it at the Public Services Center.
Nice.
Because they have the capabilities and we can do...
I thought it was for the small little rooms.
Does anybody have?
I would think February is a better time, but if you can't work in, then obviously March makes more sense.
Is it on, are you guys thinking on a Tuesday or on another Tuesday or a Thursday?
No, this would be a retreat.
That was Saturday, that was last time.
All day Saturday.
Yeah.
Why don't you do it on a Tuesday? I'm fine with that.
No, I didn't know. I didn't know why. I didn't know why they're so far out.
That's entirely you guys.
Any preferences from?
No, I, I just prefer sooner the better. So, you know, whenever, if it works out in March is the day, that's good. But, you know, I can do a January, like 3rd, it's good for me. That's when you get the new council members up, you know, the clock is ticking. You know, you're setting policy.
You need a little bit of time to get them going.
Well, there's no, there's no getting them going, you know, look at who you got coming aboard, you know? It's like, you're really going to spend a lot of time training, you know, some of those people?
Well, if there's no other direction other than as soon as possible. March 2nd sounds great to me. Does that sound okay with everybody? No issues?
It is a Saturday. You guys want to keep it on a Saturday? Do you want to change it to a Tuesday?
She's fishing. She's like, oh, please, please.
At what time would it start if we did it on a Tuesday?
All day.
It's an all day, so you...
So we'd come all the way to nine o'clock like we're doing right now?
No, eight to five usually.
Okay, so it would end beforehand, okay.
It may not be, I don't care what you do.
You're already planning ahead?
I'm good with Saturday. Anybody else have any issues? Either way?
I'm okay with Tuesday or Saturday.
Okay. Saturday would make more sense for me, for scheduling. But I could make a Tuesday work if I have enough notice.
I need notice.
Five months' notice?
Five months would be good.
Teacher.
I'm going to make an executive decision then I say this. We're good.
Well done. Well done.
Good job, Terry. All right, with any other discussion? Is that it? Saying no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Excellent.